was under your mask mandate. Week three was this past week. Under the second week of your mask mandate, there were 360 positive cases. That is a 600% increase from week one. 600% increase under your mask mandate. So my question stands, how have you made my two sons safer? Only logical conclusions that I can come to is that number one, either mask or making it spread more in the classroom, or number two, that they just don't work. We have three weeks of date in our county and our local community. Since you guys are concerned with 19,000 students' health and well-being and safety, I wanted to just try to bounce around and look at some different facts. You know, in 18 months of COVID data from Mandy Cohen's Department of Health and Human Services, there have been a total of five school age deaths in the state. 18 months from ages five to 17, there have been five total deaths. The North Carolina Department of Transportation has yet to put out their 2020 study, but their 2019 is the most recent on accidents. And during 2019, from ages five to 14, in the state of North Carolina, there were 32 children killed in automobile accidents. So why have you not mandated 16 and 17-year-olds stop driving to school? They're 640% more likely to get killed in a car wreck than they are from getting this flu. I haven't heard anybody talk about that. Those are simply facts, as I've stated. I don't know if any of you have actually done a little research behind a CDC study that was conducted in the spring in Georgia. That was over 90,000 elementary school age students, 169 schools. What they found is there is inconclusive evidence that children who wore a mask all day were any less likely to contract the virus than those students who did it. That is our own CDC. That was buried in a study that no media outlet even picked up and I was able to find a few weeks ago. The CDC same guidelines that you were wanting us to follow has said, based on their own study a few months ago in the spring in the state of Georgia, there's inconclusive evidence that masks work, and yet you have mandated it. The final thing that I want to make sure my five Republicans on the school board that I voted for understands and understands clearly is that what our superintendent wants to talk about with this strong, North Carolina strong schools toolkit, it is not a requirement. It is not legislation and it is not mandated to be followed. It is a guideline, simply stated. It is not a law passed by state legislature. It is not even an edict passed by our governor, one of his many that he has done illegally and unconstitutionally under the last 18 months. It is nothing more than guidance. In the last two weeks, I've reached out to my local representatives and confirmed that with all of them. This morning, I spent about 30 minutes on the phone with a policy analyst under Mark Robinson's office, and he confirmed that that is nothing more than guidelines. You guys do not have to follow that. We can make this mask optional like the other half a dozen counties that he told me are doing, if you will simply listen to the science and data and if you will simply do what the people who put you in office to do. That's all I got.
I've never been to a school board meeting. I never really thought it was necessary until now. Unfortunately, I never thought it was really necessary to pay attention when we had our elections on who to vote for. And that's shame on me. Really should have paid a lot more attention to who every single one of you are and what job you're doing for my children. I know that you guys are part of a learning community filled with teachers, parents, kids, bus drivers, substitute teachers, cafeteria workers. We're all in this together, and I know that we all want the best for our children. I'm kind of tired of the "for the greater good." That's honestly wearing thin just a little bit when I don't think that your mandates are really for the greater good of the majority of people, majority of our children. So your change in the mask mandates, one week in the school was super disappointing. I was really proud of Davidson for not falling for a fight in so many other counties. I was really excited about our county. One week later, that gets changed, and I heard that at the last meeting, you were saying it wasn't based on science. So is it based on politics? Was it the CDC, the White House, Fauci? I mean, that changes all the time. So looking at that, it's going to be chaos. It's going to breed disruption. It's going to breed divisiveness. So why don't we just look at science, even though you're saying it's not based on science? So I don't understand that. I wasn't here. The COVID virus is .1 micron. The N95 mask is the only one that has a 95% effective rate of like holding back that .1 micron. So like all these masks that I see most of us wearing, not really doing anything for holding back that mask. The data that he just gave, I had no idea. That blows my mind that the numbers have increased. COVID is a virus. There is no proof of asymptomatic spread, no matter how they want to skew that. The chance of a child dying, again, he gave a really great statistic, it's like 5,000ths of a percent. And herd immunity, it works if vaccines don't get in the way. So let's look at the vaccines. When you have the COVID-19 positive case exposure guideline, all of it targets the unvaccinated. I don't even know why there's like three yes and no questions because literally all of them are, oh, you're unvaccinated, you don't show symptoms, oh, well, you're within, okay, well, you have to be quarantined. It makes no sense. Vaccinated are the ones that have like this huge viral load, which kind of makes sense with all of the statistics he just gave of the increase on week two and week three. The vaccine approval has been rushed. I'm really hoping, I know we're talking about masks right now, but I'm really hoping you're not going to follow some kind of really ineffective data for pushing vaccines on our children. The antibody-dependent enhancement, ADE, of this virus causes this worsening of the disease by the vaccines actually increasing the ability of the virus to enter the cells. Luke Montagni, who's the French Nobel Prize winner in medicine in 2018, has been warning about this, that the vaccines are pushing this viral load. So a lot of our teachers, a lot of our students have this, and it's causing those of us who, you know, can't breathe outside this mask, like he said, like other parents have said, to be breathing in something that's not healthy. And if you look at the VAERS report, like if we're going to look at science, if you look at the VAERS report, there are so many deaths and so many situations of children dying of getting Guillain-Barre or myocarditis. All of this is happening because they're being pushed on this. So personal testimony, my two middle school daughters, who I've pulled out to homeschool this year because I just don't want all this, their Spanish teacher, who has been vaccinated, who's been wearing an N95 mask, who kind of stayed to herself for a year and a half, guess what? She's dead. She dies on Sunday. Masks don't work. Vaccinations are not working. So don't go down that road. Don't look at other people's data. Look at the science and think about your children, our children. The other thing is because we are doing this, we are stopping one thing. We are changing personal identity of our children. We're suppressing healthy relationships. We're, the concentration levels during school, that's also dramatically decreased. And then the worst thing is that we are grooming our children not to question poor science and to just follow along blindly to authoritative decisions that really are not for their good and really not based on evidential proof. Thank you for your time.
Let's take our trip, Kester.
My name's Trip Kester. I've been a resident of this county for the last 30 years. And when I look around this room this evening, I see a lot of concerned citizens and parents that probably are representative of people from all over this county. But the one thing I don't see, this conspicuously absent, are the people out in front of the building that have basic God-given First Amendment rights to freedom of speech, just because they may say something that's not politically correct or popular with this board. Well, I got news for you folks. My God-given rights don't end where your feelings begin, nor do theirs. And I would just, no, I would just like each person here just to take a minute and familiarize yourself with each one of these board members who represent you, supposedly represent you in the best interest of your children, and let that sink in for a minute. Let that thought sink in for a minute. I've attended the last two school board meetings in this facility, and I'm going to be honest with you. I was shocked and appalled at the height of arrogance I saw with people being neglected time to speak, being shut down specifically and escorted out of the building by law enforcement, by my brother sworn officers who are up hold, sworn to uphold your constitutional rights, being put in a position to have to violate that oath to haul somebody out of here just because something may have been said that didn't sit well with the powers that be. And I want y'all to just think about that for a minute. I mean, when I look at this whole situation, I mean, folks, we've got a duty and an obligation under our Declaration of Independence. It gives us a clear remedy, how to deal with this height of arrogance and not allowing our rights to be taken. It's spelled out, we've got an obligation that the Declaration specifically says when a person, when any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it's the right of the people, we the people, to alter or abolish that government. So I'm just here to tell you this evening, if you're as frustrated and as angry and as fed up with what I've seen demonstrated here the last two weeks, people denied their liberties that I've sworn to protect, join me, stand up, say enough's enough. Let's don't tolerate it anymore. Let's get out, remember who these people are, let's vote, let's take the initiative and get involved ourselves and run for these positions, and then let's finally bring to the table representation that not only we the people deserve, but what our children deserve. Thank you.
Moving forward to COVID-19 update report.
Thank you, board members. Today marks the second week of masks being required for all in Davidson County schools. And as we expected, it has taken time to work through all exposures and identify those who must quarantine since your decision on August 23rd. And I just will focus right now on today's dashboard that has been posted. And certainly, while we are disappointed that our student and staff cases are on the rise, I do want to point out that our exposures have been reduced, which also then reduces the number of students that must quarantine, which I know also was a very serious concern of yours. I want to just point out briefly that in, within the two weeks that masks have been required, while we're certainly not where we want to be yet, this week, the number of students that have been required to be assigned to quarantine, the number is 651 compared to the data from a week ago, which was 1,447. So as has already been pointed out this evening, and as you have seen on our dashboard yourself today, our positive student case number, I want to be clear, has increased. Today's, we report that at the end of the day Friday, we had a total number of 360 students identified as confirmed positives, 924 close contacts identified, but 651 students assigned to quarantine. So I think that, you know, again, unfortunately, our student numbers are up, which we know that while some transmission certainly takes place anytime we're together, our students spend a lot of time outside of school as well. Many of our young children are involved in Little League sports and have other clubs and organizations that they're members of, as well as just spending time doing fun things with family and those things as well. So I do think that it is worth noting that our quarantine numbers are down, and certainly if we continue that trend in the next two weeks, I think that we will see that we're headed in the right direction. As for our, the increase in our student numbers, I think that we have seen that on the rise, but I think it's important to note that our increase there is in line with the trends we are seeing across the county and across the state, unfortunately, in students and adults as well. The other thing I would like to point out is that we are also monitoring our daily attendance in all of our schools. As you know, that we do not contact trace for exposures outside of school. And so that's one thing that I've talked to several of you about, and so we have, we are monitoring our absenteeism, and we certainly will monitor that and identify any that may be related to COVID-19 that may not be included in our school system dashboard, and I certainly will be sharing any information gained with you all as far as that goes. Again, I would like to commend all of our Davidson County school staff for working so diligently, along with our students and parents, because our goal is to keep our students in our schools five days a week for in-person instruction. We want to continue to do all of the things that we know are so important that enrich our students' lives outside of academics as well, but it's going to take all of us working together. And so I just want to let you know how much I appreciate your support, as well as our staff, our principals, our teachers, every single, every single person that is part of our DCS family, because they're working really hard and we'll get there in time, I do believe. The only other thing I would like to mention is that you are aware that the governor signed Senate Bill 654 into law, and one requirement of this law is that all school districts adopt a policy on masks, and then at each month's meeting, every board of education, not just Davidson County, but every board of education must vote as to whether the policy needs to be modified. So for your review, our attorneys have prepared a policy for your consideration, and that is in your agenda as part of your agenda this evening, and you may review if you have any questions. I'll certainly be happy to answer them. I know our legal counsel will as well, and we can vote to approve that policy at the next meeting. And that's all I have. Oh, excuse me, I've got one more thing. I'm sorry. As per the authority that you have given to me during this time that we're dealing with the pandemic, to make purchases that exceed the threshold that the board has set for the superintendent, I need to ask for your approval. We have purchased some air filter purifiers. We've purchased 96 of these that are placed in classrooms and other areas throughout our county to help with air circulation. We will use some of our SR2 funding for this. We've put these specifically in high-risk classrooms where children and students and staff are, where circulation may not be as effective as it is in others. And the total amount of this purchase was $54,903.84. So I would like to request your approval for this purchase at this time.
Funds came from SRR funds?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Which are, that's one of the, one of the items and areas of focus to be paid for to help the quality of air, air quality and ventilation in our facilities.
Okay, board, you've heard the superintendent's request for approval of the air filter purifiers that purchase at $54,000. So have a motion for this request.
I'll make a motion for the request.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other questions? Vote for affirmation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board members.
Hey, Dr. Colley. On the curriculum and instruction.
Good evening, board members. I have three items this evening from curriculum and instruction. The first item is the Bayotta In-School Nursing Services Agreement. Board members, tonight I am requesting approval of this agreement with Bayotta Home Healthcare Incorporated. This is for specialized in-school nursing services according to students' IEPs for the 2021-2022 school year. This, this contract, this agreement with Bayotta will serve for three registered nurses to work with these students in various schools across the district. The cost of services shall not exceed $138,000 and will be paid for using state EC funds.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So are they full-time then?
Yes, ma'am. They are full-time, one-on-one with students.
Oh, one-on-one with the students.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mouse on the board, have a question. Heard Dr. Colley's request for approval of Bayotta In-School Nursing Services Agreement not to exceed $138,000 using the EC funds. So have a motion for this request.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, just made a motion. Second?
I'll second.
Any other questions or comments? Vote for affirmation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board members. The next item this evening is the Maxim In-School Nursing Services Agreement. We are requesting approval tonight for this agreement with Maxim Home Healthcare Incorporated. This agreement is for in-school nursing services related to the healthcare needs of the student population and COVID-19 for the 2021-2022 school year. As you are aware, board members, we currently have nine school nurses from the Davidson County Health Department to serve 36 schools in our district. And we know, looking at the state ratio, we are well below the state expectation for student-school-to-nurse ratio. This agreement with Maxim will place, is a contract to place nine additional registered nurses to serve our schools. The plan for this agreement is to place these, seven of these nine, in our middle and high school feeder patterns, so it will be one registered nurse per middle and high school in each feeder pattern. The eighth nurse will serve Stoner Thomas, with the ninth nurse being able to serve our non-traditional high schools, as well as our larger highest need areas. Currently, we have already begun to start placing these nurses in our schools. We are asking approval for this contract tonight as part of our SR2 funding with our federal funding, so that we can meet the needs of our students. Just so you are understanding of the scope of services for these nine registered nurses, these nurses will be able to provide health services to identified students in accordance with their individual health plans. So these are not just students that may have a health plan in their individualized education plan, but also students that may have a diabetic care plan or an asthma plan. They can help with COVID screening protocols in our schools. They can help identify the healthcare needs of the student population in general within the schools and plan and implement services for those healthcare needs. They can also assist with the immunization and health assessment requirements that are set forth in law by the state, as well as serve as a healthcare consultant for school personnel, students, and families. Tonight, board members, we are requesting approval of this Maxim In-School Nursing Services Agreement. The cost of the services shall not exceed $630,000 for the entire school year and will be paid using federal SR2 funds.
Anybody have?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So the nurses that we have now, how many did you say?
We have currently nine.
Nine, okay. So they'll be in the elementary schools, and then these, these new ones will be, as you just laid out in your plan?
In essence, yes.
Like seven middle and, middle and high school, one at Stoner and one at the non-traditional?
Correct. However, our nine health department nurses currently serve, some serve four schools, some serve five, and one serves six schools. They will continue to keep those schools as they have built relationships and understand some of the health needs with students in those schools, but these nurses will be on-site daily so that our health department nurses can focus their efforts at the elementary school, but also be support to these Maxim registered nurses in the middle and high schools.
Okay, so everybody's going to stay as they are, but, and then we're just going to add additional support to middle and high?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Dana, is this just a one-year contract?
This is just a one-year contract, yes, ma'am.
Anybody else have any questions? We've heard Dr. Colley's request for the Maxim In-School Nursing Service Agreement, which is an in-school nursing service, not to exceed $630,000 using SR2 funds. Do I have a motion for this request?
I'll make a motion.
Have a second?
A second.
Any other questions or comments? Vote for affirmation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board members. My final item this evening is to request board approval for personal protective equipment for secondary music. Board members, we are requesting this evening for the purchase of instrumentalist face masks as well as instrument bell covers. We are requesting this purchase, excuse me, from the band attic. The use of the face mask for both chorus and for our instrumentalist with the face, face mask openings for instruments like the flute, as well as the bell, the bell covers that cover the ends of the instruments. These will help contain the spread of aerosols while singing and playing instruments, both in chorus and in band at the middle and high schools. The cost of the PPE for secondary music is $38,310.49, and it will be paid for using
The bell covers, what are they made of? Just cloth or?
It is, it is a form of a cloth, but it is, it has been recommended that this be used. Several of our school boosters, band boosters purchased some last year for the instruments, but we, you know, we determined that we felt it was best if we purchased that for all instruments across the district, but it is a form of a cloth. Yes, sir.
So this goes on, so this goes on the end of all the instruments?
Yes, ma'am. That the students are blowing into.
Anybody else have any questions, Dr. Colley? Need a motion for personal protective equipment for secondary music through the band attic at a price of $38,310. This will be, once again, using SR2 funds. Do I have a motion for this request?
I'll make the motion.
Just made a motion. Second?
Right.
Second. Any other questions or comments? Vote for affirmation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board members.
Dr. Colley, thank you very much.
You revised, revision to your policy 6.3, which addresses limited circumstances where a student might be released to attend another school district. This is for your review and consideration, not necessarily for your action tonight. The only change here really deals with extraordinary circumstances and The only change here really deals with extraordinary circumstances and compelling situations that really are not outlined in your present policy, that really are hard to define or outline, but which occasionally, not very often, but occasionally are brought before the superintendent to deal with a situation where there could be a death of one or both parents or guardians, or there's a medical situation which really would call for the consideration of releasing that child to attend another school district. And it's to provide for at least that opportunity for the superintendent to consider those extraordinary circumstances. And so that's for your review and consideration until your next meeting.
Or if you have any questions now, or if you need to call, let them know. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Johnson?
It's not him.
Board, as you recall, we presented the 2021 NCDPI Facilities Need Survey during the January board meeting. In that report was the need for $25.8 million for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning renovation throughout the district. This evening, we'd like to provide you with an overview of the plan using S R funds to meet some of these needs. First, I'd like to introduce Chris Stroop. Chris Stroop is here from the Consulting Engineering Services. We're working with this group to complete these projects within two years. Now, the first list that I'm going to share with you is on the document I just handed to you. The first list of projects includes cooling towers. You'll note the schools there that are in desperate need of cooling towers. These are going to be completed in non-c cooling seasons, so that during the fall/winter months, we can shut those down and get those installed. Next, we have boiler projects, and there you see a list of schools that are in need of boilers, and you'll note there, again, we'll replace those during the non-heating seasons. And then finally, we have HVAC replacements and renovations, and you'll note there, that's you've got a front and a back there, you'll see a listing of our schools. And again, we'll try to complete these during sessions when schools are not in session and during breaks. So our goal is to impact with our S R funds just about every school that we have except for our newer schools. And so we do have a need, that need, again, was spelled out in the 2021 NCDPI Facility Survey, which said we needed $25.8 million to take care of our needs, and our S R funding will go as great length to take care of those issues. Do you have any questions for me or Mr. Stroop?
I just have a question about right now, what's going on. So is Brown, Ledford, and Hasty, are they, do they have air now?
Yes, so the, let me just go through each one of those with you. I may leave one out. We'll start with East. We did bring in portable units in those designated areas where we had some issues. That's been taken care of. You said Brown, Brown, we have been working over there. We've actually brought in two outside contractors to take care of those. Did you mention Ledford High School by chance?
Ledford Middle?
I'm sorry?
Wasn't it Ledford Middle?
Well, actually, it was Ledford High. Ledford High had a cooling tower to go down because of some piping. We have that up and running. We have a temporary, and that is one on the list, at the high point of the list there for.
Okay, and then I know there was like one school, I think, at Hasty, one, one classroom or something at Hasty. I think you've got some kind of contraction in there right now that's helping ventilate?
Portable system, yeah.
Okay.
We have several of those throughout the district.
Okay. Are these listed by priority?
No, they're just in alphabetical order. And we do have a priority list. We actually have, you know, in the document we shared back in January, we actually had priority A and priority B, so we'll be working on priority A and priority B, unless we have something that, you know, we're not anticipating that goes bad and we'll take care of.
Can you email that to us again? The priority list, can you email that to us?
Sure, yes, we can share that with you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Our second item tonight also referenced the 2021 NCDPI Facility Survey that we did. In that report was the need for $10.7 million for roof replacements throughout the district. Recently, we replaced the roof at North Davidson High School. We replaced the roof at Tyrrell Middle School at the classroom annex, and now we're underway at Ledford Middle School. Tonight, I'm requesting your approval for metal roof consultants to begin the design phase to replace the roof at Southwood Elementary School. The scope of work includes design, leading the bid process, and providing field administration for the project. The total cost for this work is $144,000, and will be used, will be paid using capital outlay funds. And by the way, the estimated cost for this roof is $1.8 million. And there in your package, you do have the proposal from metal roof consultants.
Is this the same one that did North Davidson?
Yes, ma'am. It's the same architect, Easton.
That's the same question.
Did what?
So I'm going to ask the same question.
Oh, I know, me too.
They did a good job on North Davidson.
Yeah, I was getting ready, it's the same.
Okay, board, Mr. Johnson's asking for a vote on this tonight for metal roof consultants to design and bid and administer roof replacement. Cost of their services is going to be $144,000. Project is going to be around $1.8 million. That's the estimate. Do you have a motion for the request?
I'll make the motion for the request for a second. Southwood Roof Replacement. In sharing.
Got a motion and a second? Any other questions from board? Vote for affirmation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board.
Board members, I just want to bring to your attention that our next regularly scheduled meeting will be on October the 4th at 6:30 here at Davis Townsend. And as usual, your 2021-2022 Board of Education meeting schedule is attached.
Okay, at this time, board, we need to go in closed session to prevent disclosure of information of confidential privilege under General Statute 1433181181. Consult with board attorney and protected attorney-client privilege under General Statute Consider qualifications, competence, performance, condition of appointment of a public officer or employee under public, respect of public officer or employee under General Statute And to consider the acquisition of real property identified at Davidson County Parcel Number 13021000050 under General Statute 143318185. Do you have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Motion made, second. Okay, vote for affirmation. We'll resume in three minutes.
What'd you say?
We'll begin in three minutes.
Okay, I just.